You have to do. And when you're doing that work and you are committed to that work, it is in the process of doing that work that you'll meet your lioness. And she will be as close to her perfection as you are to yours, which means you'll both be flawed. But you know, you'll kind of fit each other. You'll be complimentary to each other. You know, Tanaa Reeve has skills I don't have. I've got skills she doesn't have. Neither one of us is perfect, but you know, life is a sack race in that sense. You know, it's like we're tied together and she, you know, she lights me up and it makes me better and I light her up and make her better. And we try to help each other heal and we're just, we, there are no, there are no, neither one of us is looking for a backdoor on this relationship. We're not looking for a parachute. You know, this is it. And when you know that, you look at things differently. So start by loving yourself. Ask yourself exactly what would you really be attracted to? And then realize who you really want to be is the kind of person that person would be looking for.
There is that because I, I do remember one of my Facebook friends actually did post that, post that question. More along the lines of a yes or no, as opposed to, you know, doing a deep dive, so to speak. But she literally said, what I date. And you know, the majority of the people, you know, decide they want to say yes. And even for me, I had to look at it and go, okay. I've been married to my wife almost twenty years. We've been together twenty years. You know, I've, uh, you know, I've, uh, we, we've raised both of our children, you know, one's, one's getting ready to, you know, make his mark in the world now as far as, you know, his, his service to, his service to his country. I've got, you know, I've got my youngest getting ready to go to, good and ready to go to college in less than a year. So it's like, uh, yeah. So how the hell is that look moving forward? So yeah, and there's now, it's now it's a matter of, okay, so how do, reconnect? Because we've been in such a parental romance, you know, for, for so long.
Just meeting her. If you want, you know, if you romance her now, she will fall in love with you to a, much deeper level because you've already been with her for twenty years. She gave you her girlhood. She is now a woman. You know, and she's a woman who's looking at the fact that there are younger women out there who have all the characteristics that she had when she was that young woman. She's wondering where your heart is and where your mind is. And if you let her know, that you still see that girl that she was, you still desire her, love her, you court her every day. You tell her every day, you find out what her love language is. Does she need to be told? Does she need to be touched? Does she need to be shown? You, it, you, you court her in her language. Okay. And she will give you back more than you can possibly imagine. This is when it's going to get good.
Of that, I have no doubt. I think that's what I've been looking forward to pretty much this entire time. We get the, we get the, 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 we get to do the things that we had to hold off on. As of the fact that we had to get to, you know, on the past where we were comfortable with them being at this point. And yeah, you're absolutely right. It's just a matter of just sitting down and going, okay, so what exactly was it at the beginning? Or recreate.
And who are you now? Cause she's a different person now. And you're a different person. Introduce her to you. Let her know that you want to know who she is and how you can make her feel like the most special woman in the world every day of the life you have together. She gave you everything, man.
I wholeheartedly agree, sir. Thank you. Um, that being said, um, there's, I know things that, uh, that as far as our, um, our audience is looking forward to at this point. Um, I wanted to take this time to really individually showcase the two of you as far as your catalogs are concerned. Um, sir, I will go with, um, Mr. Well, Dr. Black at this time and everything that he has going on with regard to all of his, books, uh, both in the coming as well as probably up as well. Sir, if you would like to throw in any of the, uh, any of the catalog that we see at this point or, you got going on, by all means, please do so now. Take that time.
That looks wonderful.
Well, I'm appreciative. Let me say that. I'm very, very, very appreciative and I'm, and I'm quite humbled. Well, you see, of course, the titles there, those book covers. I think the only thing I'd add is I have a new novel coming out soon. It's already edited and at the publisher titled, Don't Cry For Me. Don't Cry For Me. That, that'll be coming out soon. Sometime twenty-one, I think. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, and I have an essay collection, my very first essay collection, titled, titled Black On Black, that will be coming at thereafter. So I would just add those two titles. I'm very, very honored and humbled that, that, that you would post that. So thank you very much.
Not a problem whatsoever, sir. I, I know, I, I know my, I know we were in the same house at one point as far as, books was concerned. I think it was, um, I forgot the one with her as far as that was. It's just, it's been so long. Um, since we actually ran with that as far as, but that was, that was my introduction to you before Perfect Peace. Um, and it, it was, it was a fun read back then. It was, it was definitely something that, uh, that, that resonated with me on a lot of bits. Um, I've got as, asking which, well, let me, let me do this. Stephen, I think she, I think she may have your mission up. Yep. She's got your catalog as well, sir.
Yeah.
And I say, yeah, you, you've had, uh, 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 attention with regard to a lot. Um, there's been a lot that have, uh, that, that come to mind when it comes to me, but I'll let you plug yourself on this one. I'm not.
I'm trying to transitioning away from novels right now. I mean, I'm still going to do some, but my primary interest right now is Hollywood. You know, is film and television. I just feel that there is more that I can do, more people I can reach, more money that I can make. Let's get real here. So I'm having fun with that. Uh, but one of the things that is upcoming, I noticed that Charles Johnson gave you a quote, Dr. Daniel Black. And you could not have gotten a better quote than that. Chuck is a pal and has been for years. We, and we're actually doing a graphic novel together.
Oh, wow.
It's, uh, it's like, uh, uh, I, it's, what is it? Um, it's made up of six, of eight EC comic style, short stories, science fiction, fantasy, horror. Uh, each of them actually has a serious intent. And each of them represents one step in Buddhism's eightfold path to enlightenment. It's called the eightfold path. And we, I've been wanting to do this book for ten years and working with Chuck as a, as a world-class writer and Buddhist scholar. You know, made it possible for us to get the leverage necessary to do that. So that will be out. I'm happy about, I'm happy about that. So aside from that, my favorite of all of my books would probably be Lion's Blood. Um, that's the, that's the alternate history in which, uh, Islamic Africans colonize the Americas, bringing white slaves here. It is probably the best book I'll ever write. I will almost certainly never spend, never put as much of myself into a book as I put into that book. I mean, I did, I did six years of research on it. Um, and I, I did not, I, I did not feel, I do not feel that the energy I put into that book, got the kind of response from the outside world that I would need to feel that it was economical for me to spend, a similar amount of time and energy in the future. I'm happy with the book. I'm, I'm delighted with the people respond, the way people responded to it. But I, I need, I need a different kind of response at this point in my life.
Right. That's right.
Worthy of, you know, six years of my working life is a, is a serious chunk in the working life. That's no joke.
That's right.
Indeed. All right. So, okay. So it, I, I guess it was something else that popped up that I needed to get done. Um, what I wanted to, okay. So what, uh, I, I've been told that the, the, the piece that we were talking about with regard to love languages needed to kind of be reiterated. Because the, uh, I guess the, the, the feed kind of kicked off. I'm not sure as to why, but we can kind of circle back to that, sir. If you remember, uh, those particular words, I know I was referring, uh, my relationship as far as that was, but, um, just your back on, you know, being able to, uh, I guess court all over again in that regard. Um, if you could reiterate your thoughts on that, sir.
Yeah. Was, was that, that question for me or for the doctor?
Uh, that was for you, Stephen, because I know that was, that was something that, uh, that you spoke on, uh, quite eloquent, eloquently as well, sir.
Yeah, I'm not able of remembering exactly what I said. What I can do is address the question again from a slightly different perspective. How do you, how do you create that kind of connection? Um, I would, there's a tool that I really like called the Talking Stick. And it's basically just a stick, anything. And you basically hold the Talking Stick. The person holding the Talking Stick talks. Then the other person has to repeat back to them what they said. You hold the Talking Stick until the other person has repeated back to you what you said sufficiently clearly that you believe that they understand it. Then you hand them the Talking Stick and they get to say what's on their mind. Until you can repeat it back to them sufficiently for them to believe that you have heard what it is. Now, that is a tool that is really great for, for learning about one another. Because what you have to do is remember that every human being satisfies their needs in life in a slightly different way. We've all got the same needs, but we satisfy in different ways. So if I need to be touched, you know, you touch me in the right way and I know I'm loved, you know, but my wife needs to be shown. I need to bring her flowers. Or I need to tell her, I love you, you know, every day, you know, whatever it is, you need to understand what means love to them. What means respect to them. It's not about, it's like a salesman. Okay. Your reasons for buying that vacuum cleaner don't matter. When you walk to some, into somebody's house, what is their reason for buying the vacuum cleaner? You don't sell vacuum cleaner, you know, I'm selling vacuum cleaners because I need the money. Nobody's going to buy your vacuum cleaner because they want you to have money. They're not even going to buy a vacuum cleaner because it's a great vacuum cleaner in terms of the machinery. They might, they might buy it because their child has an allergy. And that vacuum cleaner will, will suck the dust off the, off the rug better than any other vacuum cleaner. So now you're not selling a vacuum cleaner. You're selling clean homes and happy families. So, so the person you're in love with, first of all, if you love yourself, then you know that nobody makes you feel loved. Not really. What happens is somebody might help you get in touch with the love that you have within yourself. You know, I can relax and drop my shield and now I feel loved. Okay. So what is it that allows your partner to feel loved? I can almost guarantee they need to feel safe. They need to feel respected. They need to feel like you see them. If you're in an intimate relationship, a young woman who is at the, at the prime of her fertility, knows that she has a limited window for that power. Okay. That she's going to lose that. She sees her older sisters. She sees her aunts. She sees her mom and her grandmother. She knows that these things pass. So the question is not, are you sexually attracted to me right now? But do you see the person I am and are you still going to love me? When that fire begins to die down, who is it that you're in bed with? Who is it that you're courting? Can you stand at my side? If, like I said, you look for a lioness, I say, because if you're in touch with your own power, you know, you're going to burn somebody out who's not in touch with their power. You know, um, I know that Tanaa Reeve was terrified that she was not going to be able to meet a man, who would be able to walk at her side in the way that she needed him to. I don't want to use any names, but there was a woman who had come to a lot of author events, that Tanaa Reeve was associated with, whose husband, Busman's basic, uh, task seemed to be to hold her purse and her chihuahua. And she was terrified that she might have to settle for that in her life. What she needed was a man who could walk at her side without being dazzled and blinded by her fabulousness. And Tanaa Reeve has fabulousness. So it's like, if I was in competition with her, I would have been burned up by them. I have to have my own power. So you have to bring your power to her. It's two powers, two fires, coming together. You have to see her, remember that she's insecure, that she has her, her fears, and her, her, her dreams, her hopes. Can you hold her like a little girl when she's down? Or do you only love her when she's dancing for you and showing how fabulous she is? No, no, no. That's where the Talking Stick, the, you know, how does she need to be told, I love you, I see you, I will be here. I have made my choice. You are my woman. I am giving you all of who it is that I am. How does she need to be told that? And however she needs to be told, that's all you tell her.
Now, that, that segs me into a, to just where, segue into our work as far as the, excuse me, as far as the black family structure is concerned. Um, the question that's been posed is, um, more women than men, within, uh, within the black family structure as far as that is, how is we, as a, how can we as a village, that there are so many single mothers, black men? Dr. Black, I want to get your thoughts on that one first.
I didn't hear the question fully. You froze up a little.
No problem, no problem. Um, the question was, how can we as a village support the fact that there are so many, single mothers that are raising black men in our community right now? Um, is there any way that there can be a support system for those women?
Well, I think a couple, uh, this, this question is a complicated question.
Right.
Um, and, and the answers I think are even more complicated. But to start, black women raising children is not a new reality in America.
Agreed.
Black women raising children has been, that has been the case disproportionately. That has been the case since the days of enslavement. Right? For all kinds of reasons, you know, some personal and some sociological. The thing I will say, the thing I will say today is, I think that one thing we could do as a society that I think would be great, but I think this, this would be great for white folks and anybody else. But since we just talked about black family, I'll just leave it, you know, centered among black people. But that is, I think we should train people, uh, men and women. But men, but boys in a particular kind of way, because the way we socialize boys. I think we need to train boys to dream of wives more than dreaming of children.
Oh, my God.
There you go.
Heard in weeks. Thank you.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
I'm, I'm on a, I'm on a forum on Facebook, Black Fathers, and I'm seeing so many of these people talking about, well, what do I do with my baby mama? My baby mama did, my baby, I said, what, what, what happened to wives?
That's right.
Don't you think your children deserved for you to be willing to, whatever it took to be there every morning and every night? For God's sake, what the hell are you doing?
That's right.
You know, it's, it's so, I would say that the problem is, the black family was deliberately and accidentally destroyed in America. Our capacity to dream and be independent and, you know, that process of, of maturation is natural for all human beings. That's the thing of domestication. Okay. We have to, I would say that, that the answer is, in teaching our communities, what is it to be a successful autonomous adult? To move to adulthood, to master your world, to be in a formal relationship, you're prepared to at least try, to stay with for a life. And if you fail, at least you try. At least you're committed to it. Okay. You know, and you don't make babies with somebody who you're not prepared to be with for twenty years.
Now, that's, that's the part, I, that's right. Yeah, that's where I pick back up. This notion of having children with someone that you don't care for, somewhere you're not even sure you want to be with, that is called a disaster.
Absolutely.
So I say that what we do, what I'm, what I'm committed to doing is teaching the principles, that allow a person to master their body, their physical health and fitness, their careers, to be able to make money doing something that you love doing, that is a benefit to your community. And to have a relationship, loving yourself and then being able to create, have a committed, passionate relationship with another human being. So the two of you can protect your family and move through life together. I think that that knowledge is critical. If you have that knowledge, you, you work the rest of it out yourself.
Absolutely. I know, Dr. Black, you were mentioning there was a couple, there were, there, that, that, that there was a bit of a complication, during the question. Could you elaborate on?
Yes, yes, yes. I also think that, that black families don't have to be, I think black families don't have to be heteronormative, to also be tremendously successful, right? And I just think it's important for us to be clear about that. I think whether it's two women, whether it's two men, with, like, I just think you need grown people. So where I agree with Stephen completely is the real problem is that we have, we have, I want to say this kindly. The real problem is that we have grown children, who are trying to make families. Like, we need grown people. We need adults who are truly, truly adults. You know, one of the things I've been doing, I, I, I've taught at a black college now for thirty years. One of the things that I have been doing is I'm trying to, just as a very kind of basic starting place, I'm trying to get, young people, I'm trying to get especially boys, not to even consider children before they're thirty years old. Don't even think about it, right? Don't, don't even think about it. Now, sure, that's, you know, that, that's a kind of hard, fast line. I get it. I get it. I get it. Right? But what I'm really trying to do is to get them to grow up first. Right? Because the notion of, the notion that you're going to be someone else's father, the notion that you are going to love a woman or love a man fiercely, before you know yourself, that is called a lie. That is not going to happen, right? So, so, so once again, Stephen, you know, we certainly agree there. I, I just think that what we've got to be clear about is, is that has, that, which has always been the truth, quite frankly, for black people. And that is, we also have, we also need to continue the creative tradition of building families that are not necessarily biological.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No way, shape or form that I imply that this has to be a heteronormative. Talking about it takes a village. You're talking about. You know, that your, your, your neighborhood, aunts and uncles, that those children need, need that. You know, the, the not having a child until you're thirty, I know when my daughter was ten years old or so, I knew that she was going to come and ask when, when was it going to be okay for her to start having sex? I knew that question was going to come one day. So I had to put a lot of thought into that. And my answer was sex is an adult behavior. And adulthood is conation, is responsibility for yourself. So you are ready to have sex when you have organized your mind, your body, your emotions, so you can produce legal goods and services. You exchange with your community sufficient to put a roof over your head and food on your table. But until you do that, you do not want to play those games.
Right. Agreed. Um, I think, I think to Dr. Black's point, um, I, I think the two, I think, to a two-parent household regard, that looks.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It takes grown people to raise children.
And if that cannot, and that's really where I'm at when it comes to.
Right, right, right. I think any one person trying to raise a child or children alone is a disaster. I don't care if it's a man or woman, black one. I think because the, a child's needs are so expansive, a child's needs are so huge. And quite frankly, a child's needs are greater than even two parents have.
I, I know, I was raised by a single mother. And I saw, love divorce, and I saw how it ripped her apart. Just it, it ground herself in dust, trying to be both mother and father to my sister and myself. Um, and I honor the women who honorably fall into that position, you know. But men who have babies and are not prepared to raise them, or women who get knocked up by guys without knowing who these men are, I think that they are children playing adult games.
I agree with that.
I can, I can love them and respect them as individuals, but they are not adults.
Agreed.
Question here, can you address the idea of women having to raise their husbands? Yeah, marry.
Already with me on that. There you go.
Adult. And you can marry an adult if you're an adult. And don't worry if statistically, there are more black, let's say you want to stay within the black community. Statistically, there are more black men, more, more black women than are black men. And my question to you is, that has nothing to do with your results as an individual. You know, I love the story about the, about the two hunters are running from the bear. And one of them says, you know, we can't outrun the bear. And the other one says, I don't have to outrun the bear. I just have to outrun you. So if, if you're saying that there are, are, are seven men for every eight women, how come you're the one that got left out? Let somebody else be the one that gets left out. You know, be, be, you know, be better, you know, be stronger, be flyer, be more energetic. It's like, yeah, life is competition. And I hate that. And I, I, we could address the other part of that question. But the statistics have nothing to do with whether you could find a man or whether you could find a woman. They had to do, you know, you don't blame statistics. Your attitude should be, if there's one good man out there, I'm going to get him. If there's one good woman out there, I'm going to get her. You know, if it's a bad economy and there aren't many jobs, I hope you're not going to let your children starve, just because there are only seven jobs for every eight people. Your attitude should be, I'm going to get mine. I'm going to get my job. Or maybe even I'm going to make, you know, start a business and be able to hire other people. But the, the first thing is you don't have to raise your husband. You don't have to raise your wife if you marry an adult. And if you're an adult, you can find an adult. They're not that rare.
No, honestly speaking, they're not.
Really, you're, it's, the problem is in the mirror. And until, until the men and women can look in the mirror and say, I'm not good enough to attract the kind of person that I want, what do I do to change and get better until you, you've got that? You are not ready to be a parent. You are making, you're giving excuses where your children need answers. Your children need a, need, need a path in front of them. They need to know, how do I be an adult in this world? How do I carry myself with dignity? How do I live without fear? You know, how do I find love? How do I have sex in an honorable, ethical fashion? They're dying to know these things. So you resolve those questions so that you can be a leader in your community, at least to your damn children.
There is that, sir. Um, the, I, I think where she was coming from with regard to just, I don't know. It's, it's, it's really interesting when we deal the, the, I guess where it comes to, what we're dealing with, with regard to other human, like other human beings, you might as well call it that. But when you're dealing with a person and that person is so busy trying to, I guess, put the representative up until they feel comfortable enough that that representative can kind of fall to the wayside. Um, would that be a component of what we're dealing with with regard to her question in specific? I guess that's the question I'm wondering.
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure I understand.
There's, there's.
Image that we put out in order to, oh, okay. So the, the image that we put out, nobody's going to drop all your, all their defenses, the first time they meet you.
Of course.
They're, they're going to play a game. You know, they're going to put out a little bit. Hopefully you put out a little bit. You watch their behavior. You were, their beha- behavior is true. The way they act, not what they say about themselves. And you take some time to get to know them. Over the course of a year, at least, you have a chance to watch their behavior when they're up, they're down, they're tired, you know, they're angry, they're disappointed. You notice these things and you pay attention. And the better you know yourself, the easier it is for you to figure out who other people are. You're only going to be taken in by somebody else's false self-image to the degree that you have lied to yourself about yours. Now you've just got two false images banging into each other. Both of you saying, well, this is who I really am. This is who I really am. And then later on, now they're, how come you're different from what you said? For God's sake, they were telling you who they were in their behavior and you believed what they said because you wanted to. Cause the sex was so good, you know, or whatever it is. You didn't pay attention. Pay attention. Your children are, our children are dying because their parents didn't pay attention. And I'm sorry, I love my community enough to get pissed about this. I mean, I can't sugarcoat this shit.
Of course, of course. The, I, I guess to, to say in this particular, and I, I may be, I may be breaking up a little bit, so, forgive me if I have to ask this question a second time. Uh, the question from, one of my other tribe members, Christina Pauls asked. Hopefully y'all heard me. I, I'm not sure if I, I didn't think. Yeah, that's what I thought. I was, I was a little scared of that.
I've been in the chat.
Yeah, I'll try.
Okay. So can you all hear me?
That as well.
So let me ask the question. It says, um, what affects, this comes from tribe member Christine Pauls. What effects do the absence of a father or male role model in a man's life have, when it comes to how they handle love and relationships? Let me ask it again. What effects do the absence of a father or male role model in a man's life, have when it comes to how they handle love and relationships?
Dr. Black?
Yeah, I'll leave that one to you, Doc.
Yeah, you know, I would, I would say two things. First of all, we, we, as the community, have to stop thinking that a father's presence is optional. Right? I would start there. A father is no more optional in a house than a mother should be. Right? It, it, in the absence of a father, it's going to cost a family. But it's not just going to cost the boys. It's going to cost the girls. It's going to cost the mother. It's going to cost, it's going to cost the entire household. So when people say, we don't, you don't have to have a father. Yes, you do. To the same extent that you have to have a mother, if you understand the role of two grown people, in terms of building a unit. Right? So I, I would start there. The second thing that I would say is, I think one of the things that a father ought to do, right? I think a son should watch his father, build the relationship with his mother. I think a son should watch his father adore his mother. A son should watch, in fact, a, a son really should be so enamored by the way his father treats his mother, that that's the reason he later wants a wife himself.
Agreed.
And I think a, I think a daughter should see the same thing though, you know? So I, I, I do not think that a father's absence is a greater absence for a boy than it is for a girl. I don't think that. I think a daughter needs her father as badly as a son needs his father. I think that's very important, right?
I was, I was, no, please continue.
Okay. I, I, I think also, and, and I, and the reason, one of the reasons I think that also is because, I think that a daughter should have an experienced relationship with her father in such a way that she, she, she is taught indirectly or even directly in many instances, the standard of how she ought to be treated. And, and the standard of what it means for what she will accept as honorable behavior toward her. I think the father should be the example. And so when she runs into. I think the father should be the example. And so when she runs into men in the street, when she runs into knuckleheads in school, et cetera, I mean, it, it, a sixteen-year-old girl should look at it, hey, boy, go play somewhere, please, right? Because this is nothing like the standard and the example, right, of manhood and masculinity that my father showed me. And that's one of the things that I think is really, really a, a, an inheritance that children should get from a father in a home.
Amen. Uh, I, I was raised without my father. And I can tell you exactly what the hole was in my heart. I wanted everything that I am, or a huge amount of what I am, I came wanting two things. I wanted the respect of the men I respected, and I wanted to be desired by the kinds of women I desired. Figuring out how to get there was everything. I did not have the answer. And so it, I had to go and find men. I was blessed to find a couple of men who were willing to step into that. One of them in, in, is just critical for me, lives there in Atlanta. Uh, Steve Mahomet, who's, he was the greatest martial artist that I've ever known, especially martial arts instructor, who was just a tiger, a lion tamer, and, and held that mask in the space of being both a warrior and a sweetheart of a man, just absolutely lethal physically, but open-hearted and loving to his, his community, just, just wonderful. He, he showed me how you could be both, because I was a very gentle kid. And I was told that I was gonna be ground up into dust by the world. Men were gonna beat the living crap out of me and women were gonna give me the time of day. So trying to figure that out, because what you have in our community too often is thirteen-year-olds being told what it is to be a man by sixteen-year-olds. They have no slightest idea what it is. Instead of having a, a career, you make money. Instead of raising a family, you knock somebody up. You know, instead of having genuine respect, you know, you, you, you pop a cap on somebody's ass. I mean, it's, it's, what is the adult world? The mythologies of what the adult world and the realities of it are such different things that, that you have to have people, and if you want to know how to have a relationship, you talk to your grandparents who've been married forty years. You know, it's, how did you do this? You'll find out they were up and down and sideways, hated each other, loved each other, you know, screwed each other, didn't want to touch each other, but they were committed.
You are absolutely right, because I know I was.
Committed. There was no back door. The, once you start that, it's not about you anymore, it's about your damn kids. It's about creating a home. Now, I'm not saying a woman should stay with an abusive husband. I am not saying that at all. I, that's right, or a man should stay with an abusive woman, absolutely, or two, a man should stay with an abusive man or a woman.
Right, right, right.
It is, that, that I believe in love. I believe that if you start by loving yourself enough to be willing to fight for yourself, then you're touching that predator place inside yourself. As a lion, as a tiger, now you're gonna look for somebody, a lioness or a tigress to walk beside you. You're looking for an equal, you're looking for a hunting partner, you're looking for someone you respect to watch your back. You know, and that, those two animals, you know, that animal part of us then gets combined with the human part of us, our hearts, then gets combined with our spiritual commitment. But what do we want to leave behind after we're gone? And the knowledge that you're going to be gone is, is, but the knowledge that I'm going to be gone is what makes me want to hug my son every day and say, I love you. I'm proud of you. Makes me want to talk, make sure I talk to my daughter who's moved out managing an apartment at UC San Diego. And it's just like, you know, just what can I do for you? You're still my little girl, you're my baby. What can, what can daddy do for you? Is there anything that you need? You know, that, 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 that love should connect to your willingness to be fierce. That warrior self, and then the loving self, and then the thinking self, and then the spiritual self. And now you've got a whole human being.
Absolutely. Um, the, I think the next, I think was the next question. I can't remember how that turned up, but I'm trying to sit here to absorb everything that's been said at this point.
Watch the replay.
Yeah, that part. Crisis. You'll forgive me, gentlemen. Um, but no, I think, uh, I think in, in this particular, um, in this particular kick, I think Will, it, it's just a matter of how those particular, no, let me swing, let me, let me, let me swing from this particular fence. The, the, to say from what you were explaining with regard to that, as far as how men need to be and how that would work. Um, I know in my catalog, I tend to try and find a way to have my characters not be so, for lack of a better term, problematic at the beginning of, uh, at the beginning of the, uh, of, of whatever the story arc is for me. When it comes to how you create your characters, or how you created your characters as you were going through your catalogs, how did you decide that you wanted to create the men that you wanted to create in your books?
Dr. Black?
That's never a conscious question for me. You know, I don't ever sit down and decide, okay, these are the kind of men I want in this book. And then I start writing about them. Um, in fact, for me, that it's always the dilemma or the issue that, that is, that is most critical for me. And then the hu- how the, and then how the human beings resolve it, or who are the human beings who deal with this issue, uh, that kind of evolves. I think that, um, I think the men in my book are very much like the men in my life, and that is, um, some of them are wonderful and, and all of them are troubled in some way. And all of them have issues and needs and desires, et cetera. Um, one of the things that I, that I do look at in, in my books, very often subconsciously, but I, every now and then consciously also. And that is, um, this troublesome thing called father-son relationships, right? In terms of like, you know, what do, what does a son do with daddy when, when he's not all that the son has dreamed? Or what does daddy do when the son does not become what he hoped, you know? Um, and, and how do father and sons, um, how, how do they resolve their expectations, quite frankly, of, of, of one another? And how, and how do those resolutions create a stronger bond, you know, between men? And the biggest thing that I think I have discovered, both in the books and in my life, is the thing that so many men, and so many black men certainly too, try to avoid is actually the key to the beauty of father-son relationships. And that thing is called vulnerability.
Right.
You know, the thing my father didn't, my, my father was an amazing man, worked like a horse. The thing my father didn't do was give me his heart.
I see, yeah.
I didn't know what he thought, I didn't know where he hurt, I didn't know if anything e- ever made him cry, and, you know, I didn't have his heart. I knew who he, I, I understood his being, and I was fed every day, you know? But the thing I would really say is, I think I'm very much now concerned with trying to help us in very creative ways and through my characters, uh, understand that the only thing you really have and the most precious thing we have to give that binds us to each other is our hearts.
Amen. Absolutely. And for those, but I would like to touch on that really, really, first of all, you said everything perfectly, so I don't even want to touch what you said.
Absolutely.
I do want to springboard off of, those of you who are, are dealing with stress and you're looking for a meditation practice, there is no meditation practice more powerful than just listening to your heartbeat. Just listening to your heartbeat, thinking about, about the love in your life, the love that you felt in the womb, listening to your mother's heartbeat. We can connect back to that love. That's where we came from. That's, you know, that human, no matter how abused you might have been in your life, human children who are not loved die. It's called failure to thrive. They must be hugged and touched and kissed and, and cooed to, they must be. So you can, you came from love. You experience love at some point. If you learn how to touch that, you can heal your own heart, and then you have your heart to give to your sons, your daughters, you know, just, just absolutely, my children, you know, I know what it cost me, I know how hard it was for me to heal myself. I would die and burn in hell if I would put one of my children through that.
That part.
Period. My, and my wife knows, Tanara knows that. It's like, this is who I am. It's like, the question of, you know, why can't I leave my children when I was living up in Washington and go and live in Miami where she was, you know? Why couldn't I? Because my daughter needs me. And if you love me, the person you're loving is the person who would give that kind of commitment to your family too. That, if, you know, if you want me to be the kind of person to walk away from my, my children, aren't you saying that you're gonna be worried about me walking away from our children? And if I, if I have that kind of commitment, don't you understand? That's just who I am. That's just how I roll. I'm not gonna be any different when it's you. You know, I'm gonna be there one hundred percent, every morning, every night. I will tell, when I first met my son, I held him up to the sky and did the roots thing, you know, behold, the only thing greater than yourself. His star, he knows I love him, he would knows I would do anything for him. And I believe in him. In other words, I'm being the father I wished I had had. And that's how we, we move on as a human species from generation to generation. We try to do better. My dad did the best he could, you know? I, I needed things from him he could not give, but I'm gonna give those things to my son. And he will stand on my shoulders and give to his son and his daughter. Or I'll kick his butt.
There obviously is that. Um, I, the other thing, I, as far as just relationships on that particular, um, on that particular level, is just a matter of when you're, when we're speaking of father-son relationships and, and really just in those particular, I guess in those particular fashions, uh, I know for me, I, I, I delved into it. I delved into it in my, my, my most recent novel, the one that's currently behind me at this point. Um, where I actually had, you know, that father-son dynamic in terms of, of the, the, the father wanting to see his son kind of do better than him, but at the same time, he still wanted to be, he still wanted to be in that same realm and it's, and, and feel like he was still, word I'm looking for, that he was still viable in the sense that, okay, I retired too soon. Well, I left, I left that world too soon, and I need to retake, you know, whatever, even if it means going through my own son. Um, so there is that, there was that dynamic that I dealt with on that particular level. And it actually gave me a whole different perspective, even when dealing with my own father. Because I, when I was growing up, it was not only him, it was my uncle, it was my grandfather. Those three men in particular made me who I am today, you know, made me, gave me the type of, um, the, the, the type of well-rounded that I could possibly be in that regard. And when I looked at it from a perspective of what I was dealing with, with my fictional father and son, and how they dealt with a lot of it, dealing with in that particular book. But it was just the simple fact of, damn, I didn't realize that we really butted heads a lot more than I realized, because we were the same man in a lot of instances. I was so busy seeing how he treated my mom, how he, how he loved my, how I wanted to make sure that I saw that and I did this, and I mimicked it in a lot of instances. Same thing with my uncle, same thing with my grandfather, because they, they managed to stay in their relationships before my father passed last year. They were together forty-plus years. My grandparents were together fifty-five, almost sixty years themselves before he passed away. You know, my uncle is currently in, you know, same, same situation. Long-term relationships in that regard, but I looked at it from a perspective of how do I, how do I convey that in my own fictional universe? As opposed to it's just constantly dude is, dude is just ridiculously problematic, he's, he's uh, homophobic, or he's this, or it's just all traits that are constantly being pervade, you know, that constantly being brought out. And I just, I guess for me, it was a matter of, I just didn't want my catalog to reflect that. I think that was where the, 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 the idea of where I was coming from. Even when it came to the books with regard to how my, how, how my leading men did the LGBT community, you know, I think with yours, Dr. Black, I think it was perfect piece, if I remember it correctly, that had that kind of, um, had that kind of theme, if I remember it correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, with regard to that storyline. If you could speak to that, um, I'd be greatly appreciative on that front.
Um, I think the, I think the thing I might say, and yes, it was perfect piece, yes, that talks about, uh, uh, flu- gender fluidity.
Yes.
In a black community, yes, yes, yes. The, the interesting thing is, the questions of fatherhood, though, don't change, right? See, if you're committed to children and if you love children, you, no father is gonna get only the child they dream. You're gonna get some of what you dream, but you're also gonna get some pieces of the thing you didn't dream. And the beauty of adulthood, the beauty of, of being a father is that you gotta be grown enough to also understand and to also just ask the question of what is God trying to teach me by sending this child to me? See, that, that's a grown father's question, not what's wrong with the child, or why did I give this child, or, oh, that, they must get that, they must have got that from their mama, right? No, you know, it's a, a grown, a grown adult father seeks to ask, what did the child come to teach me? I'm clear what I need to teach the child, but what did this child come to teach me? How did this child come to stretch me, to grow me? And I think many, 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 many parents, many fathers miss that question, right? Many fathers do this thing of trying to figure out how to endure children and how to endure the parts they don't want and they don't, and looking forward to the time when the child gets grown and you can quote-unquote, get away from me, because then now I don't have to deal with the parts of you I don't like or I don't prefer. You grown, I'm grown, you do your thing, I'm doing my thing. Then for me, the father missed fatherhood.
About, you, you just said something that I just, I love. First of all, you're, 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 you're spitting truth right now. This is.
Absolutely.
I, I absolutely love it. Um, the disowned self. Uh, if there are three major energy centers, just from, from just a way of looking at things, like, you know, uh, shamanic psychological point of view. Their heart center contains the disowned self, the shadow. So like the belly brain is the warrior self, that's your survival drive. That's the third rail of, of, of human psychology. But the heart center, that's where we put all our disowned stuff. And if we blame our children for being the parts of ourselves that we have disowned, we are missing the lesson.
That's right.
We're exactly missing the lesson that we need. I, in terms of how hard parenting is, it is arguable that the smartest piece of advice I have ever heard in my life on any subject um, was a woman told me that she was getting her children off to school and just really tired after getting them out in the morning. And the woman who lived on the other side of, of the duplex was a grandmother, and she was kind of looking at her. And she turned to the grandmother and she said, raising children is, is hard. And the grandmother said to her, raising children isn't hard, it's just daily.
Yes, indeed.
Dust chop wood, carry water, this is your life. This is who they are. Stop fighting against it. Embrace, this is not something you're doing until you can do something else. I mean, it's like, when you're eating a meal, are you eating that meal until you can do something else? You're missing your, you're missing your meal. When you're making love, are you making love, are you thinking about the television show you're gonna watch when you finish? You're missing it. Your kids need you to be present with them right then, when they need you there then. There is no substitute. Miracles happen in the unplanned moments. I don't know when my son is gonna come into my office and say, Dad, you know, what do you think about love? You know, Dad, play with me, you know, Dad, help me with this, or just want to tell jokes. In those moments, his character is being molded, your relationship is being forged. You can't helicopter in and out. You know, it's, you can't do that and, and then think you're gonna have the same kind of relationship with someone who has given everything they have. You can't tell a kid, you know, I'd die for you. And, but then tell them you don't have enough time to spend with. They, they know that, they see what you're doing.
That's right.
They know. Every little girl, every little boy deserves to believe that there is someone in the world who would go the final mile for them. This is the game, that you're all they've got, you're their whole world. And yeah, you have to deal with the outside world, but they need to know that you love them with all your heart. All your heart. You do that, and then you've been an adult, you fulfilled your function, you, you've earned the sex you've been having fun with.
Absolutely.
And it is a lot of.
Okay, that took care of that sequence. Okay, how about that? Um, the, uh, this question I have that'll pretty much finish everything off at this point, um, is really speaking to the concept that since we all three are male authors, uh, in various genres within the wor- uh, within the, the literary uni- literary escape. Um, and she, she went ahead and dropped me into the mix while I'm at it. As you can see, this would be the majority of my, it was not, it's actually a piece of my, uh, of my catalog as far as that is. I'm, I'm about thirteen novels in deep and various different anthologies, including the two that are in that particular world right now. But, um, e- everything that with regard to the concept that, um, I guess the question that was asked from, that was asked was, is there a viable way for black authors to cross over into a wider market without having to include them in major charac- works? I think what she, what, what that question was meant by was the simple, was a simple fact of, okay. I think what she, what, what that question was meant by was the simple, was a simple fact of, okay, we're black authors. We wanna try and cross over. Do we all, do we always have to include Caucasian characters, European characters to be able to, be able to cross over in that regard? Um, I guess that, that will be my question to you gentlemen.
No, the answer is no. Um, that you, that, that, if you wanna learn how to do anything, the thing to do is find the people who've already done it and look at what they did. You know, if you, you, you find them, you find them, the meal that you want, then look at what the recipe was. So take a look at the, at the bestselling black authors, you know, and, and the ones who do cross over without selling out. And do their, their, their novels are usually really, really good, first of all, and they're often intensely personal. They're intensely human, they're not necessarily, if you go deep enough into the individual, you emerge in the universe. So you have a responsibility to master your discipline and you will be able to communicate to people who are capable of stepping out of their racial identity into their humanity. And there are enough of those people that you can make a lot of money. You don't need everybody. There are some people you're just not gonna get. Don't worry about them. Write for yourself to the depth of your being, be scathingly honest. And then at least you've had the satisfaction of writing a damn good book. Whether you sell it or not, that's, that's, the universe decides that. You know, but you can do their, you can do your best book, your best work. You can be better every time you step out and that's what you should aim at.
Absolutely. Dr. Black, your thoughts?
I, I definitely agree with Stephen. I, I, I totally agree. In fact, I think a serious, serious pitfall to fall into is to write, uh, predetermining how many books you think you want to sell. Um, I think, I think the absolute best thing a person can do is write and write what it is you feel in your heart and in your soul. Um, and then it'll do its own work. I, I, I like Stephen's notion too, that the universe will sell the book for you. But what you have, the, the hard part, the really hard part is that being scathingly honest.
Right.
That's the tough part. Very few people ever achieve that because once you do that, you can't come back. You know, if, uh, once you get naked, the whole world has now seen you. So you can't lie about your, you can't lie about, about yourself anymore. You can't lie about any body parts anymore after everybody has seen it all. Right? So most of us reserve at least some secrets, at least some things. Because again, when, when you get that far out there, that, there's just no return. But also I think, um, I think what's very important is to, I think the art has to lead the audience. There's too much going on today of, of the artist following the audience.
I see, yeah, there is that.
That's not art.
Art, you're not even doing art anymore.
Question, it may be craft, but it ain't art. Art is, if my three-year-old sticks his hands in the potty and smears it on the wall and says, look, you know, he has created art, he's, he's done something to express what's going on in his heart. All he needs after that is skill and using a more appropriate medium.
That part.
It, it, it's, it's, we're not here, we're here to, to, to fully express ourselves as artists. You know, the, the craft, the, the skills, the plotting and the characterization and the, you know, all that other stuff are, are the tools that give you the language to communicate what's going on inside you. So the person on the other side can read the story and feel the same emotions you felt when you were writing it. But it's the emotional content, you know, Bruce Lee, Enter the Dragon, real emotional content. It, you have to go there, you have to start there. That way, if people love it, fantastic. If they don't love it, at least you were honest. And at the end, when you're on your deathbed, all you're gonna have is, did you, did you do the best you could in this lifetime? Did you love? Did you matter? Did you help a child? You know, and if your work comes from that place, then it is, then the, the, the work itself is rewarding. The checks are nice. I love money, but I would not trade money for my soul.
That's right.
Agree. That goes along with, with one of my mattress of just being able to write what's true to you as opposed to writing for the public. Uh, you do that, you, you, you do so at the cost of your own.
There has never been another you. There's nobody in the world has ever been you. Ultimately, that's all you have to give. That's all you got, man. You gotta be you, cause everybody else is already taken.
Absolutely. Well, gentlemen, it has been a pleasure to spend the last two hours with you at this particular point. If you wanna give your party thoughts, by all means do so and then we can wrap this up.
Doctor?
I think, first of all, I wanna say I am unbelievably honored to share this space with the great, the wonderful Stephen Barnes. I, I have so many of your books here in my house, I really do. And I really am honored. I'm just so honored. You're a legend in your own time, brother, and you've earned that legendary space.
Absolutely agree.
And so I'm really, 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 really grateful and humbled. I really, I mean, seriously, I'm just humbled to share this space. So thank you tremendously. Shakir, uh, certainly thank you also for moderating this and for the time. And certainly thank Lisa Woodson, who really kinda had the vision for all of this.
Absolutely.
Oh, Lisa, we appreciate you. I, I think the only thing I would say, um, as a kind of final comment is that, that one of the things I think that happened on, on this, um, platform, that I think I would urge all of us to just pay attention to it. And that is there were ideological places where Stephen and I didn't agree necessarily politically and in some personal ways. But the beautiful thing is I would never, ever, ever trade my honor of him for a philosophical position. I'm never, ever, ever going to do that. And that is the inheritance, I feel like that we have as black men. That's the inheritance of our parents, of our grandparents, that's the heritage of our spirits, right? I'm, I'm a very spiritual man, he's a very spiritual man. And see, I don't care what a position or philosophical position is, if it makes you dishonor someone, that position, you should surrender it. Absolutely surrender it. And I'm just thrilled that we had this and I'm just absolutely thrilled that we got a chance to demonstrate our truth, but also to demonstrate that there is something higher than truth too, and that is called honor.
Agreed.
So I'm happy about having been here. Thank y'all.
No problem, sir.
I, I would say that love yourselves, be gentle with each other, but be strong. Start from strength and have, once you have the strength, then you can open your heart and you can love the whole world because you're safe.
That's right.
I, I am happy beyond any words, having been a nerd, you know, on the outside of things, feeling like I had no tribe, I, I am totally honored to be in the company of strong black men, to be able to feel that I have something to offer, something to give back to my community. And I, I love, I look forward to the next time that someone thinks that I can be of service.
Absolutely.
In this way, I live through this. So thank you, all of you.
Oh, it's definitely been my, both of you gentlemen, if you would like to let the audience know before we leave how to reach you, um, as far as your specific books are concerned, I think Dr. Black will go with you.
Um, there are two ways to reach me. One, I do a Facebook Live spiritual lesson absolutely every Friday at six thirty PM on Facebook Live, right? You can just go to my page, Daniel Black, if you wanna join me on Facebook Live. That's Fridays at six thirty PM Eastern Standard Time. And my website, which is probably the best way to reach me and to know about my work is danieloblack.com.
Very good, sir. Stephen, you're?
I'm around, I'm on Facebook, I've got blogs and stuff like that. Uh, the, you know, the, uh, I've got a company called Mastery Plus, sells products that have to do with self-improvement. Um, in, on Amazon, you know, most of my books are available on Amazon. So I just, you know, I'm gonna be doing more Facebook Lives and, and live streaming other platforms. So on my page, there on Facebook and in other places too. So if you wanna, if you wanna reach me, you'll find, you'll figure it out. I, I ain't that hard, I'm not hiding.
That part. Well, then, then as far as I'm concerned, um, anyone that wants to reach me, I can be reached at Shakira Rashawn dot com. Um, I'm also, I, I basically, everything is at, is at the, the, the personal site as far as that is. Um, all my social media connections, the whole nine yards. Um, this has definitely, uh, been a wonderful piece that we've been able to kinda end with as far as this particular segment is concerned. Um, anyone that wants to, uh, check this out, uh, in the background, uh, uh, in the interim, uh, once we've actually gotten everything loaded onto the site, you can find us on the, uh, Cavalcade of Authors YouTube page. That's where this will be loaded in, uh, quite soon as well. Um, along with the, uh, along with the Lenikas Literary Cafe Group on Facebook. If you wanna join that, we can definitely put that link in the, uh, in that particular setup as well. Um, gentlemen, it's been a pleasure.
Uh, thank y'all. Good night.
Take care, guys. I gotta go hang this much done. All right. Bye-bye.
Take care, folks.